I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of agenda for record meeting. Under provisions of the public meetings law, the state of Missouri, the board must adopt by roll call or vote an agenda that includes a timed, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, August 7, 2017, at the Administration Center, 1005 Water Drive, Florissant, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. A motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. And Secretary, what do you think?
Ms. Ponder.
Aye.
Ms. Hawkes says aye. Secretary goes aye. I agree, aye. Aye.
All right, first up will be Dr. Bland. For the McLaurin North Student Athletes Run to State Championship.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Education. At this time, I'd like to recognize the McLaurin North Student Athletes. I'm going to ask that Coach Castro please come up also as we recognize the athletes. Four McLaurin North Student Athletes, Azariah Griffith Senior, Michelle Owens, freshman, Sidney Rogers Senior, and Lauren Taylor, freshman, demonstrated they were the fastest in the state. At the Disha Girls Class 5A State Track News last May, these young ladies battled against tough competition throughout the season and came out on top in the highly competitive 5A class. Congratulations. And thank you to Coach Castro for your support with these young ladies.
This portion of the meeting is allocated to show a short video. I'm warning you, it's five and a half minutes long. For the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of interest to board members and the community. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of August. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the future of school boards. Despite some critics who claim locally-elected boards of education are an outdated form of governing our public schools, a professor and researcher at Seattle Pacific University, Dr. Thomas Alsberry, says school boards have proven to be the most effective way to govern local school districts. He says there's a reason responsibility for education has been left to states and local communities. And researchers have supported the concept that not only is it important for kids, the work that you do, but it is actually important for our country. And I think that's a very important message that's sometimes lost. It's been said that the local school board is one of the last, actually, remnants of true local government left in the United States. There's a good reason to maybe preserve it. Alsberry advocates what he calls a balanced governance model for school boards that emphasizes informed oversight that is neither disengaged nor overreaching in its decision-making. He made his remarks at MSBA's recent Leadership Summit. Registration is now open for the 2017 MSBA Annual Conference to be held October 5 through the 8 at the Lake of the Ozarks. The event features more than 120 concurrent sessions. Most are presented by MSBA member school districts. Also, be sure your school board is represented at the MSBA Fall Delegate Assembly to be held on Friday, October 6 during the annual conference. This delegate assembly will be considering approval of MSBA's Advocacy Positions Document that combines legislative resolutions, platform statements, and position statements from the Missouri Public Education Vision Project into a single document. The new Advocacy Positions Document will form the basis of MSBA's lobbying efforts during the 2018 session of the Missouri General Assembly. Delegates do not have to be registered for the annual conference in order to participate in the delegate assembly. If your board's designated delegate cannot attend, you can send another board member to represent your board at this important meeting. The debate over school choice continues at both the state and federal levels. School choice takes many different forms, including vouchers, open enrollment, charter schools, and choice options within the public schools. Most recently here in Missouri, the General Assembly considered but did not approve legislation to establish what are called education savings accounts for parents to use to send their children to public or private schools using taxpayer dollars. Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven told an audience at MSBA's recent Leadership Summit, supporters of the concept often argue that schools will improve simply because parents have a choice.
That is probably where we are right now at the federal level, is that there's a sense of belief that if parents have the ability to use their dollars to send kids anywhere they choose, that that'll create better opportunities. And I think that's the one that we're going to have to really work through as a state on what that means and what that looks like, because clearly, parents are your, you know, the children's best advocates, and we want to support the belief of the parent. And yet, as these two alluded to so passionately, a public, a solid public education system is absolutely vital, vital to a state's prosperity. No matter where you choose to send your child, you absolutely have to have a thriving public school system for all of our children to access.
Van Deven says in states that have some sort of choice option, the vast majority of parents continue to send their children to a nearby public school. She made her comments during a panel discussion, including State Board of Education Vice President Dick Linds and MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall. As students, teachers, and staff are returning to begin a new school year, it's a good time to think about ways we are keeping our schools as safe as possible. MSBA Center for Education Safety reminds school administrators, it's a good time to review your district's emergency operations plans. It's also a good time for administrators and those responsible for school safety issues to reconnect with all agencies in your community that might be involved in responding to an emergency situation. By the way, the annual Safe Schools Ecologists Conference, sponsored by MSBA Center for Education Safety, is set for October 4 and 5 at the Lake of the Ozarks, just prior to this year's annual conference. Registration information is available through the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia. This portion of the meeting is allocated for the board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to board members and the community. Tonight, we have two board members who are absent. Mr. Ebert had a prior family commitment, so he was not able to attend, and Ms. Harge, who is currently recovering from surgery, so... But myself and Mr. Hampton will give her update. So we'll start off with Ms. Ponder.
All right, good evening. I have the talent management portion. The Office of Human Resource Services is diligently monitoring the staffing needs as enrollment continues day to day. All current teaching positions are filled, and the status of hiring will be updated after the final student count for state reporting is submitted in September. The first ILT/PD Day under the new format happens on August 28. It will be a full day for teams, meeting at the Administration Center and back at the schools. They will be working on building leadership moves in all staff. District ILTs will be working on assessing their effectiveness. All the rest of the staff will be receiving training around PLCs put on by the experts from Education Plus. That's all, but I just wanted to add that I hope everybody had a great first day back, and wish everyone the best of luck for the new school year. Thanks.
Ms. Hawkes?
Good evening. I am on the technology and infrastructure of the district, and the, under technology, the internet is up and running at the STEAM school, as well as the wireless and Wi-Fi systems. The phone system isn't quite totally complete, but it will be complete by this Friday. And the flat panels are finished. They're waiting for the pins, but they're being used, and I understand the teachers are really thrilled with getting to use them. And then the, throughout the district, the instructional technology is running well, and everything seems to be going smoothly and ready for the technology department. Now, for the plant that never does anything, Mr. O'Neal and his workers have been very busy, and tonight, he's going to talk to us about a contract renewal for the second year on trash, and also filter purchases, because the bids went up, and we have to go ahead and do that again. He's got everything going on the STEAM school, and all of the projects for the summer, the district-wide cleaning and the mulching of the playgrounds, and the new security booth at McLaurin North, along with many other projects are completed this time. I would just like to also add that I'm happy that there's another school year, and I hope that all of you have a great year. I would like to mention that, you know, being around for many, many years and being ancient and old like I am, I've had, we've had many outstanding teachers pass on to be with the Lord, and we had another one, Mrs. Nancy Harris, who just left, and she was at Ferguson Middle. She was my, excuse me, she was my daughter's teacher, as well as just a dear friend. She used to read my speeches for me, since she was an English teacher, and then I would give better speeches that way. So I really appreciated her being in my life. So I just wanted to mention her, and I would just like to have just a moment of silence in her memory. Thank you all very much.
Dr. Thurman? Oh, actually, I guess I'll jump in to Ms. Harge just first. Kevin, if you could come up, please. Connie did want me to tell you that she was recently appointed to the Ferguson Youth Initiative Board, something she's very proud of. She's on, also on the Florissant Advisory Board as well for youth, so it's quite an honor for her to be selected as a board member. I did meet with Mr. Hampton, who's our Director of Communications, to go over what was happening in the district, but I felt it was probably best that maybe he can fill you in better what's happening with the district regards to stakeholder engagement.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. The district is actively working to build community and engage stakeholders in a variety of meaningful ways, and Connie Harge meets with me and our communications and marketing team, as well as Department of Family and Community Engagement regarding the networking strategy of the strategic plan. In the past week, we've had some great opportunities to network with our community. You'll hear more about the ribbon cutting and the STEAM Academy, but it was a truly positive experience that included stakeholders from all walks of the community. Huge crowd who turned out for that ribbon cutting. Two days prior to that was the annual Hall Staff Convocation, where all district staff came together in one space at the same time to kick off the new year. And then finally, this last Saturday, was the annual Back to School Fair, and we believe that the attendance surpassed 1,700 for that event. Families had a great time getting acquainted or reacquainted with their schools, and there were fun activities for all. As Dr. Davis has mentioned previously, we have begun the Year of STEAM in the Ferguson-Florissant School District. There will be numerous activities and events to celebrate STEAM and its opportunities for our students over the next 14 months. The Year of STEAM will culminate with the 2018 Little Creek Homecoming, celebrating the 50th anniversary of Little Creek. Also, Dr. Davis has mentioned the AAA pledge. The communications team is rolling out the pledge materials, and hope is that all students, staff, and parents will commit to signing the pledge for attendance, attitude, and academics. Mr. Chabot also asked that I introduce our communications team. We have a couple of new members of our department this year, and so I'd like them to come forward at this time. Anya Holloman is the Communications and Marketing Specialist for Area 1. Anya serves the McLaurin South Berkeley Feeder Pattern, Early Education, and Mark Twain Student Support Center. She also manages our social media, Twitter, and Instagram accounts, and she'll be working on various internal and external communications. Charlene Gosden has been with us for a number of years, and she is the Communications and Marketing Specialist for Area 2, which is the McLaurin Feeder Pattern. She'll be serving Little Creek Nature Area, and she manages our Facebook account, our district website, and handles quite a bit of photography, as she did this evening for graduation and for the recognition just now. And then finally, Brandon McCady is new to us this year. He's the Communications and Marketing Specialist for Area 3, which is the McLaurin North Feeder Pattern. He also serves the STEAM Academy, so he has been very busy, as our whole team has been, and manages our video production and graphic design. This team is doing great work. We have had huge increases in the number of likes and the exposure that we've had through our social media platform and as well as traditional media over the last couple of weeks especially. And my phone was blowing up all day with Twitter shares and retweets and things like that. So lots of good things that are going on, and these are just some of the ways that the Ferguson-Florissant School District is building connections with stakeholders for the benefits of all of our students. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, and welcome.
Welcome.
When I spoke with you, we had a position open for the Parent Involvement Coordinator. Is that the correct title?
Yes, Parent Involvement Coordinator. I think that position's been posted.
It's not, it's not supposed to have been, we haven't had a recommendation yet. It's closed, it's closed on the 7th of July.
All right, thank you very much. Dr. Graves? Oh, you know, I'm sorry, Dr. Thurman.
That's okay.
Hello, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Good evening. How many of you had a fantastic first day?
Yeah.
You know what, I can always remember, as a principal, the first day being so exciting. No, I miss it that much. No, just kidding. But I had the opportunity to go to the STEAM school this morning as they opened up, and I'm telling you, the enthusiasm, that, I mean, I am just still high from walking in that building and seeing the students walk in, and they were excited about it. And I just want to say thank you to the team that worked so hard to get the STEAM school open. It was so much pride, so much pride. I felt so much pride when I went there this morning. My, I'm on this, my strategic plan area is school decorum. All schools in the district have established their PBIS universals and formulated their discussions on the new 2017-18 Student Expectations Code for Students. Over the next several days and weeks, school administrators and staff will be leading the charge in the buildings to establish a culture that is conducive to learning and to build great citizens, great citizenship. On July 28, Dr. Davis and the entire administrative team set the tone and explained the specific steps that the district will be taking to create a culture of learning and mutual respect for the 2017-18 school year. The plan was carefully drafted and the work created in the PELP, Public Education Leadership Project Summer Institute at Harvard. The team under Mr. Beal's department will be responsible for ensuring the execution, not stu, the execution of the building plans. So I just want to say again, thank you too for all the efforts that are going into school decorum. It's, you cannot have quality teaching if you don't have decorum. So, thank you again for all of your support, all your teachers, administrators. Thank you again for all the work that you do.
Thank you. Dr. Graves?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to say happy first day of school as well. For my household, it was a little funny waking up this morning. I woke my kids up, both of them. I was gonna say we was late, okay. Yeah, we were late this morning for the first day of school. Both of my sons are now in high school, and I got a call from a board member last night asking me, "Oh, you going the first day of school at the STEAM school?" I was like, "No." But since we were late, I had to get my sons to school this morning. They did not catch the bus. So I also joined Dr. Thurman at the STEAM school since I was up. But it was, I really was happy that they were late, because I had the opportunity. Well, they wasn't late, they just missed the bus, but, it was, it was a pleasure opening the door for the school. I held the door, I got handshakes. I got to see one of our students who was here at one of the board meetings, so passionate about being in probe, and just to get to see her going to the new STEAM school was all the more, it was a pleasure. It just really was, and I really liked the, that we were able to be there for them to start the school year off. So it was very memorable, I would say. But my question of the strategic plan is student achievement, of course. So, middle school will start a modified block schedule. The longer instructional class periods of 73 minutes will allow students to be engaged in experiments and participate in active learning experiences as opposed to lecture-style instructional, as opposed to the, as opposed to the lecture-style instructional model. Many schools over the summer have conducted home visits over the summer. The home visits have been a great way to foster and build strong family-school relationships. Our successful One Billion World War Challenge in 2016 and 2017 has inspired a new goal. I already know that Dr. Davis is probably going to talk about that, so I won't spill his thunder in regards to our new goal. Strong Focus in 2017-2018 will support teachers with the new updated Missouri learning standards. This year, the district has decided to administer the ACT in April despite the state's decision not to fund the assessment for the 2017-2018 school year. The district plans for August 21, the day of the solar eclipse, information had went out in regards to what we will be doing for the district, for the students, and things like that, so make sure you stay tuned to that. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Happy evening to everybody. The beginning of the school year is an exciting time, you know, because as we move to the end of the school year, everybody's fixated on graduation, getting through the school year, and then it seems like during the summer, there's a rebirth that happens, and there's a sense of excitement. And this year, we had even more excitement with the opening of the STEAM school. I had posted on my Facebook page that that day was a good day, and it was something that really re-energized me, and just hear the positive feedback that we were receiving in the community, to see the staff, to talk to the students, and so hats off to everybody who was involved. It was definitely a team effort. This is really a feather in our cap in the school district, and as well as North County, because that was truly, truly a great day. I know Dr. Davis talked about the Back to School Fair. That was a fabulous turnout. I had the pleasure, or displeasure, of being in the dunking booth, as well as several staff members of the district, and in the 45 minutes, about 45 minutes, where's Dr. Adams? He's here. How many hours did you spend in that thing?
Only 30 minutes.
Just 30? Oh, I topped you? I tell you what, I was trash talking, and those little kids, they dunked me, I think I went in about 20 times. I was begging to get out of that thing, but it was a lot of fun, and there was a time that I was like, you know, "I need out of this thing," and I said, "Stop here," but the kids kept coming, and they kept dunking. But that was a fabulous affair, and it's really growing each year to see the response that we're getting from the community. So, thank you to everybody that was involved with that. Our food service company's here. I just wanted to take this moment to say my daughter, who's a sophomore at McLaurin, is very pleased today, because you gave her tater tots. All right, she was very, very happy with tater tots, so I want to let you know that. All right, Dr. Dix?
All right, good. Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for being here. Quite a few things.
Well, because I was talking about the STEAM, and one of the questions we kept getting while we're at the STEAM Academy is what's next? And Dr. Davis always talks about, you know, the elephant, and, you know, little bits and pieces are taken off the elephant as we're moving for bigger goals for the school district. And everybody keeps asking us, like, "All right, you did the STEAM, now what?" We have 24 other school buildings. Man, we got 25 now, people. So 24 other school buildings, and what are we gonna do for them? And I keep telling this, "Hold on, it's coming." So if you could, in your remarks, kind of fill us in a little bit with your future.
So I'll try to brush through some of the other things, because what he asked about, I have absolutely been thinking quite a bit about. So quickly, a couple things. One is school decorum. It's really important, and I say that first because it's priority, and I want everybody in here who's a part of our district and who hears this, all the people out in TV land, radio land, you know, we have been very clear about creating conditions for success. And one of the things we did on the 28 at the Federal Reserve Bank was we met with all the administrators, and we specifically talked about them and their plans to create the kind of environment in their schools that would create the conditions for success. In a word, discipline. And that's what I've heard quite a bit, and what we've been working on with Harvard University, what we've been working on in being of our design teams, and a lot of that comes from some of the things I said very first when I was here, and that is leadership in schools. Principals are critical levers in making that happen. And so, schools have gotten their plans together, they're working specifically on how they communicate, how to create those conditions for success. I was in quite a few buildings this morning. They get a chance to talk to all the principals. Most of them I was able to have a conversation with while I was there. I only got to seven schools, and I can tell you that that was huge, because it's a lot, and it's great that principals are excited. I can tell you that in the buildings I went in this morning, I was very pleased. And I was really excited over at Berkeley Middle School. Dr. Maxwell, I think I saw him earlier, he may be in here somewhere, but I was able to go to Berkeley and walk the halls there too, and, you know, it's really important that leadership understands what that looks like. And what I need from everybody in this community is to support some of the work that's gonna have to happen this year. There's gonna be some typing of bills, some, in some ways, maybe gnashing of teeth. But we have to make sure that we create the kinds of conditions for success. Let me say it this way. Culture eats strategy for breakfast. Let me say it this way, culture eats strategy for breakfast. Lunch and dinner, SFE, you all can support me on the eating, right? If you don't have good culture and conditions in your school, I don't care how smart you are, how many degrees you have, how long you've taught, it doesn't mean anything. All right, I'll say it this way, if kids don't like you, you can't get them to do anything. And it's really important for adults to understand that. So I want to say that here because you'll hear more. There may be some pushback and I encourage you to support what we're trying to get done in schools. It's critical. As a daddy, it's critical that we make sure we create that. I can tell you that, I said at the Back to School Fair on Saturday, and I'm gonna formally do this now, but I said to the community then, "I want us to be a community that needs." And, you know, I'm gonna talk a little bit in a minute about transforming our high schools and some of the work we're doing there, but let me tell you, we cannot keep doing business as usual, right? Like, we have to change the way our high schools look, the way students experience learning. It's more than just structuring the change and schedule. And we focused on block scheduling, that's important, so we can have the space and time to do this. But what has to happen is the ways in which children learn and they learn how to learn. And I hope that makes sense. Our kids gotta be ready to create new knowledge and then apply that knowledge. And it's gonna have to look different, right? They have to defend their learning and there's a lot that's gonna go into that. And so I'm gonna ask the community to really rally around the work we're gonna do. So, Mr. President, Board of Education, I want to formally issue a 2 Billion Word Challenge to the Ferguson-Floreson School District. Let's give that a hand. Come on, y'all. Here's what it means. We, last year, last school year, 17-18, oh, sorry, 16-17, issued that challenge and it began in January. So from January of 2017 until May of 2017, we issued a 1 Billion Word Challenge because it was huge, but we felt like our students could do it. And they absolutely surpassed that. In half a year, they met a 1 Billion Word Challenge. And being a math teacher, right? Like, if you doubled that, 1 times 2 is 2. So, 2 Billion Word Challenge. And I was in classes this morning and I told students, "Are we doing this this evening?" And so let the record show that it is official. Principals, teachers, educators, everybody who works with us, that it is official. We are gonna expect our students to read. And so what does that mean for them? That they need to be a lot of things, but in particular, they need to be reading at least an hour a day. And our job is to get that material in front of them so they can do that, okay? So I formally issued that and let's rally around all the work that'll go into it. What I will tell you is that we have a profile of a graduate committee that we have invited several people in the community to be a part of. And the purpose of that is to design a profile of what kind of student are we trying to build in FERC floor. What does that look like? How tightly aligned are those skills? Not just some behaviors, but skills that students have to have when they graduate so that they are ready for life. And how tightly aligned are those skill sets to the standards? And that's technical work. It sounds easy to say and do, students will be lifelong learners. But what does that mean? And what does that look like in math? What does that look like in democracy? So we're gonna be really clear and specific about how to build that out so that when students are at the end of their senior year, that they will be able to defend their learning in a powerful way. There'll be a lot of work to do to make that happen and we're gonna make that happen here in FERC floor. Couple of other things, and then I'll get to the point that Rob was asking about, like, what next with STEAM in our district? The other thing we've been talking about is fiscal responsibility. And what I said to teachers, what I said specifically to principals is, and everybody who has anything to do with budget here, Laura can back me up on this and she may say a word or two about it, I'm not sure, but what I can tell you is that we have been very conscientious about how we spend every dollar. We look at class size, we have some buildings and things that need to, some work that needs to get done, there's a lot that needs to get done in our district. And opening the STEAM school, we're fortunate to have the community to support that by the way of a bond so that we could pay for that. But there's so much more to do. And so what we want to do though is to show the community, taxpayers, that we've been fiscally prudent and using the resources that we already have. And that's gonna mean principals having to take the reins in their schools and making sure that we are, you know, using our resources well. Today was the first day of school. Today went well. We had a couple of glitches here and there that we would have on the first day, buses, Jim, his team is working dealings to be on, making sure the children got home safely. And I think we are in a pretty great place, you know, mainly everybody is safe. You know, a mom who has a kindergarten on the bus seat's not gonna rest until that baby gets home. And we're not gonna rest either until that baby gets home. So I think we, everything went well today and we're excited about that and we'll keep going tomorrow. So let me say about, let me talk about some of what I think we need to do moving forward. And I want to say this publicly and you'll hear more about this as we move forward. And it may not sound so exciting, but I can tell you that the STEAM just didn't happen, right? Like, those things, there was a lot of work that had to go into it, y'all know that. And I am not, and there's no way I can take credit for any of it. Maybe a small piece, but not much at all, other than just being a thought partner. It took a lot of people to make that happen. You know, Laura's team, Terry, Larry, and I hate to start calling all of the cabinet, but all the cabinet members, they know, we sat around that table on how many days a year ago, talking specifically about what STEAM ought to look like. And there were several concept models that we entertained. And we ended here after having meetings with people and talking about different ways of thinking about it. So I say all that to say, you know, there's more to do. We have some buildings that need work. We have some buildings that have some capital needs. There's so much to do with this community and it can be done if we continue to tighten our belt. What I can tell you is that we're gonna have to have a conversation in the near future about districts and what our district lines look like. We're gonna have to maximize the use of our spaces in our buildings. We have the capacity in our school buildings to house, we have about 11,000 students. We could probably have comfortably about 15,000, 16,000, probably more, but I'm gonna be conservative there and say about 15,000 or 16,000 students and still be able to accommodate them well. Which means that we need to maximize on our space. We have some buildings like this one here that it would be exorbitant to do some renovations to. The numbers showed us it would take, we could build a brand-new building from the ground up, you know, and it would be equal to or probably less than what it would cost to renovate this space. And that's not a good use of taxpayer dollars. So I say that to say, you know, what's next? I absolutely am thinking about the high school piece and what 9 and 12 looks like. We have some really strong plans, I think, that will be something that we'll first have a conversation with the board on in a work session. But within that, we're gonna have to talk about resizing our district. I said some of this last year, I wanna, I'm kinda glad Rob brought it up because when these conversations start to happen, we often get things like, "Well, you know, if you all knew this, then why didn't you say it a long time ago?" I wanna say it now, these things won't happen tomorrow, in the next six months, but it may highly likely happen, some of these things will happen in 18, 19 school year, some others in the 19, 20 school year, in the next three years. We're gonna have to dramatically change a lot of things so that we can be more fiscally responsible. And if we do that, if we have to go back to the community, force some support on a bond to expand STEAM to 9 and 12, we can, I wanna show the community that we have been using what we already have well first, right? And so that's why I say that, that we absolutely have quite a few plans. Here's what I will tell you, and I'll stop here because y'all know I can go on. I can see your voices, please hurry up. So hear me on this one, okay? It's bigger than just K-12, right? Like, it has to go all the way down to maybe, I think, R-U-R. I said this at our ribbon cutting ceremony the other day. And our new director, I'm gonna introduce a couple of people in a minute, but Ms. Hurd, she is our new Director of Early Education. And I can tell you that we have to get children no late day when they're 2 and 3 years old, right? And we gotta put some focus on child development, right? All the way through to second grade. And then at third grade, by the time they get to that tested grade that the state requires students are tested, that they have had the time to develop. And what you do know is that many kids come to us and haven't had that experience at all. Like, if I ask you a question, "How many of you went to, you know, pre-k? Or how many of you went to daycare and had some really good experiences that prepared you for kindergarten when you got to school?" And so, maybe half of you, 68% on the bell curve, 68% probably, you know, did some. You know, another 14% over here did a lot and there's some who haven't had any experience. And I can tell you that when kids get to us and they don't have those experiences, they're further behind. And most of those students in our district are black. And most of them have homes that were like mine, grown up. And the resources weren't there. And what we have to do as a community is to make education the number-one priority. And you may say, "Well, you know, it doesn't affect me." It does. It may not affect you directly in your house, but it affects our community, it affects our economy. And I say it this way, if we do these things well, I know we can, and the STEAM school opened today and the success is there, and that's just a small piece of, a small image of success. If we can do that the way it happened today with all the work that went on, we can change this district, transform it in ways that will make sure children are ready. But we have to make sure that education becomes a civil rights issue. And it's no longer acceptable, I don't care what color the child is, it's no longer acceptable for students to leave our schools at the end of second grade and not be able to read well by the time they get into third grade. And I'm not talking about high school. High school is, they ought to be having a college degree by the time they get to 12th grade, that's the way I feel. But it is a travesty for us not to have students ready to read, I mean, reading really, really well by the time they get to third grade. And that's our goal, to make that happen. Those are some of the goals that the board has put in front of me in my evaluation. And they'll hold you accountable and they'll hold us accountable so that we can make it happen. So that's broad and vague, maybe, but I can tell you that we're thinking about STEAM, 9 and 12. IB, we're working on our IB application for North. We're working on PTEC for McClure South Berkeley. We're expanding AP opportunities, using the cohort model at McClure. So many things that are happening that I think will really galvanize us, galvanize us around excellence for FERC floor. So, I'm checking off on my blocks here. So I think I got it all. I know it's long. So I'll end with this, I wanna introduce a couple of people and then I'll stop. Y'all got no superintendents, gotta talk, right? Like, you know, we gotta, good teachers. Thank you for being patient. I wanna introduce a couple of people and then I'll go to our next phase. So, we have a couple of new folks who have joined us, and if you're here tonight, I'm not sure if everybody is here, but if you are, I'm gonna call your name and what your role is. Just do the same as we, when we introduce our communications team with Charlene and Aye and Brandon coming for, I want you to do the same thing. Come to the stand to the side so everybody can see the board and the audience. So we have, having joined us this year, has the new Director of Safety and Security, Mr. Dan Bierman. Give him a round of applause. We'd rather have Dan on board, an experienced law enforcement officer and just really excited to have his expertise in our district to take it to the next level. So, welcome, welcome, Dan. We also have Ms. Santana Hurd, she's our Director of Early Education. We got her on board too. She was doing this work in another school district and we're excited to have stolen her. I call it poaching. So I'm so happy to have her on board, that experience is critical, smart people. Also, welcome Ms. Dr. Aisha Grace, the new principal at Holman Elementary School. Glad to have her on board too, an experienced principal who we stole. I should not say that, should I? I did. Also welcoming Dr. Craig Maxwell, Principal of Berkeley Middle School. Got another one? No. I'm just joking. I think we have a great team. Also welcome Mr. Isaiah Melendez, he's the new Assistant Principal at Berkeley. And Mr. Eric Harris, he is the new Principal at McClure South Berkeley High School. So when we do our interviews, we do a lot of things, right? But what we look for are people who are passionate about the work and people who care about children, right? Who are passionate and who care about children and who want to make it happen for all children. And when we say all, all means all. And so I'm grateful to have all of them on board. Let's give them another round of applause.
Can we say more, Rob? No. I believe Dr. Graves does have something to add.
So, I would say maybe three or four board meetings ago, I had proposed to the board that we split the board up into different feeder patterns, which would kinda give us the opportunity to really get out in schools, for us to be able to actually attend different events and for principals to give, you know, personal invitations to us. Because a lot of times, we can't be everywhere and we try to be. So, to help that out, we decided that this school year, we'll try to split everyone up to different feeder patterns. So, for Area 1, which is McClure South Berkeley, you would have Dr. Thurman and Jessica Ponder. For our Area 2, which is a feeder pattern for McClure, we have Leslie Halsted and myself. And then for our Area 3, which is McClure North, we would have Connie and Scott. So just kinda wanted to give you, everybody in the community that too. So as constituents too, it'll be a lot easier to really see us in the community and when you need someone to email, call, you actually have board members where you can reach out as well, so. And of course, Rob is at large, so he gets to be everywhere, so he will like invitations as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pardon me for just a moment, I hit the wrong button and my seat dropped and I was trying to be discreet to get it back up. All right, at this time, it'll be public comments. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out the comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board or request to speak from the podium, identify themselves and keep in with District Policies 4054, 4059, and personnel laws should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any misstatement of facts. I don't know, we just have one card. Ms. Madrusik.
Good evening, board. I know you guys are getting sick of me coming up ahead during this three-minute time, but I just, I just wanted to, in case you all noticed, SFE is here representing their, today is a great day at Ferguson-Floreson School District. This is their grand opening. So whenever we first met to have our initial meetings, they talked about they have two huge days in their company. And the first day is the grand opening or the first day of school. They really did a lot of preparation for that. They brought in chefs from all over. These people are from Texas and Oklahoma and all over the place. So we wanted to, I did want to welcome them here. They were in each of our schools today, helping our staff get everything going so that it was good. They were here actually earlier, working with our staff. Previously, we brought in our cafeteria staff and they worked with them, helping them learn the recipes, learning how to kinda cook from scratch and do some great things. And so today is the big day. It was very successful. I actually was in a lot of the schools too, and they were each in the schools. We kinda had a debriefing. We had a few hiccups here and there, but for the most part, it was a very successful day. It seemed like the kids were very excited. We had a lot of good things happening and some very good excitement. So I just wanted to welcome them today. They'll be here through Friday and they will get us, help us to get everything kicked off. That was one of the reasons that we chose SFE is because of the support that they bring with them. And so we're very excited to have them here and I just wanted to personally thank them for coming from all over, from all over, so to help us get our day started. The second big day, I just wanted to make this announcement too, is Thanksgiving. They do have a big Thanksgiving feast and each school will have a celebration with parents and this is a big, apparently a very big day in SFE's world too. So, look forward to the Thanksgiving feast. Could you all please stand so that we can?
So I have a quick request of the Thanksgiving, I want fried chicken and coffees and yams and cornbread and banana.
Lots of sweet potato. Lots of sweet potato.
Awesome. Give it over another round of applause.
Uh, Dr. Herman, would you be kind enough to read the disbursement, please?
Hey, Row. Sorry. Two million nine hundred thirty-five thousand one hundred forty-two dollars and forty-four cents. Operational dispersments, eight million eight hundred thirty-four dollars, five hundred and thirty-one dol- I'm sorry. Eight hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. A total of eleven million seven hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Here none, motion passed. To, uh, 2017 Summer Learning Academy for elementary and secondary levels. Is this, Ms. Bass is gonna do it?
Good evening. I am actually going to turn it over to Dr. Warren and the summer school team to do our summer learning program evaluation, as, um, he turned over the reins to me. Uh, we partnered together and he and his team are gonna give us three tickets.
Good afternoon, Board. Evening, I'm sorry. The district operated a summer school program for elementary, middle, and high school students during the twenty, during the summer of 2017. The Summer Learning Academy was designed to meet the needs of students requiring additional instructional support for reading below grade level in jeopardy of being retained or behind in high school credits. The total cost for the elementary program was forty, for elementary was four hundred, excuse me, forty thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars. The total cost for the secondary program was ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. For a total cost of one hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars to the district. Additionally, we were able to house and provide instructional support to sixty-seven McKinney Vento students. These are our students who have been identified as homeless, but this was at no cost to the district. I will now introduce you to our three dynamic site supervisors who put our summer academy together. Let's start with my ISL, Mr. Dwyer.
Good evening, Board. It's a pleasure to be here. At the elementary level, uh, we had eleven classroom teachers. We had one secretary. We had one office aide, and we had one instructional aide. As far as staffing goes, we had one nurse. We serviced one hundred ninety-one K through six, um, first floor students. We also had fifty students with the McKinney Vento program. And at our location of Johnson Wall Bash, we also had a price of one hundred, um, SSD students at Berkeley Middle School. For curriculum, um, I used the, uh, STAR Custom Benchmark data from October and November for math and ELA, and I looked at the standards that our students were, um, deficient in, not doing so hot in. And I developed a curriculum for ELA where the teachers used making meaning to cover many lessons in the reading workshop model based on those standards that I picked from the STAR Custom Benchmark. For math, I worked closely with Adam Smith, and we looked at the math custom benchmark. And we came up with an idea to try math workshop during the summertime. So we trained the, the teachers in math workshop, and it, it was a success. I gave them the time to, um, try it, be free with it, love it, learn it, take it back to their buildings for the regular school year. I'm proud to say that in math and ELA, we had an average of one month growth for, an average for all students given since.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Claudia from Cross Keys Middle School, where we house the middle school summer school program. We had a hundred and fifty-five students that completed the middle school program. Of that one hundred and fifty-five, nine completed the high school opportunity program. Twenty-seven of them were sixth graders from Berkeley Middle, and then a hundred and twenty-eight were seventh and eighth graders from the three middle schools. In addition of the McKinney Vento students, we house nine of those as well as a special education program.
Good evening, Board, uh, community. My name is Elizabeth Nelson, and I was the site supervisor for the high school program. Uh, at the high school program, we focus on the students earning their credits. So we offer two different types of credits. Uh, we had the recovery classes that the students were able to retake courses that they had possibly failed the first time around. But then we also had elective courses that students that didn't have failing grades were able to come take. Courses like art, PE, enrichment classes. We also had a very successful AP boot camp. Um, we had a lot of our scholars come in and take that, and that was going to help them, um, with the rigorous work that they were going to encounter this year in the AP courses in high school. We had two hundred and eighty-seven students attend and successfully complete the program for high school credit recovery, and two hundred and sixty-six total credits recovered in the four weeks that we had the students there. Um, I just want to close by saying my staff and the, um, and the staff at, uh, McClure were fantastic. They were incredibly supportive, and it was a wonderful experience for everyone. Thank you.
So in total, elementary, we had one hundred ninety-one students, again, for a total cost of forty-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars. Middle, a total of a hundred and fifty-five students that were served for ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. For grand, high school, two hundred and eighty-seven students, for a grand total of six hundred and thirty-three students served, for, again, this either the total cost of one hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Thank you.
This is, uh, for board information only, but, um, do you have any questions for them? Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have, uh, Second Steps Social Skills Curriculum. Uh, Dr. Hugh Walker, please.
I think I'm listed, but you can see my fabulous colleagues have come forward.
This is my sister, so I'm gonna take her place. Good evening, Board. Superintendent of my Ferguson Flores and family. I'm just happy to be here today to, uh, introduce Second Steps, a social skills curriculum. Just want to talk a little bit and give you a snapshot, and then my other sister here tomorrow is gonna take over. Second Steps is a classroom-based program designed to teach children how to understand and manage their emotions, control their reactions, be aware of other feelings, and have the skills to problem solve and make responsible decisions. What excites me about this particular program is that the kids provide weekly lessons, activities, and take home materials to reinforce skills. Our focus schools will use this curriculum to enhance, here's that magic word, the curriculum of their buildings and curriculum, culture, and decorum. That's key for everything we do. So I'm gonna turn it over now to my sister.
So we're just gonna share a little bit more about, um, the Second Step program. It, it supports our goal to foster and promote a safe and positive environment, academic achievement, and more, and even more importantly, the social and emotional growth for all students to become productive, responsible members of society. This program falls into our tiered supports, and many of our schools are doing a lot of academic interventions. But this Second Step program falls into the behavioral side, and it will be considered a universal intervention. And I'll talk just a little bit more about that piece. The Second Step program is defined, designed for students in kindergarten through eighth grade. It's a research validated program to strengthen the social, emotional skills of students, helping them reach their full potential. There's some effective parts of social skills programs that the Wallace Foundation has found just recently, a publication in 2017. They have key features that are important. And the Second Step program has these key features in them. One of them is to incorporate safe elements, so that teaching kids about safety and how to be safe at school, making safe decisions. And these lessons are incorporated through K through eighth grade. It also occurs within a supportive context. The lessons will be delivered by the classroom teacher and allows for discussion, modeling, and even role-playing. It also builds the adult competencies. So the curriculum has a scope and sequence, guided lesson plans, materials, and online resources. The Second Steps program also has a community partnership, so there's a homeschool connection available for teachers and principals to use. The next two areas, as far as setting goals, that students will learn to be good problem solvers, not only at school, but more importantly, as they go out into the life and the workplace and in their lifelong skills. It also targets key behaviors and skills, and this next slide kind of features some of those skills. We've, um, featured the elementary and the middle school skills. The middle school is the six through eight program, so I wanted to point that out. So again, managing emotions, solving problems, self-regulation, um, decision-making skills, coping, uh, reducing aggression. These are all skills that are directly taught. The schools that will be working with the Second Step curriculum are the elementary schools listed here, and also two of the middle schools, Cross Keys and Berkeley Middle School. We have Principal Andrade with us. She's been kind of spearheading some of that, so if we're available to answer any questions you might have regarding Second Step.
I need a motion to, um, accept Second Steps, the social skills curriculum. Motion made by Ms. Halsted, second by Dr. Herman. Discussion, questions?
Yes, I have questions. Um, how is this going to work with PBIS? And how are you going to, when are you going to implement these lessons? Whether your day is full. Some questions that some of the teachers are gonna be asking.
And I can let Ms. Andrade address that, but I guess, uh, a point that we made before, if kids, um, if our students aren't focused or their emotional side is not intact, are supported, then the academics can't get completed. Absolutely. So I'll let Principal Andrade address that and how she's worked with that in Berkeley.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. Um, this evening, I wanted to tell you that it not only addresses PBIS, it takes PBIS to a deeper core. Instead of us covering lessons, um, surface, surfacefully, we're going deeper and deeply diving into the strategies that the kids need. We're teaching them how to share, how to work with one another, how to accept no for an answer in doing those pieces. We had to be creative. We came together as a team to figure out how we could in, implement this curriculum and still implement everything else. So when you come, um, to Walnut Grove, you will see that our entire building does the social skills lessons from ten fifty-five to eleven twenty-five every day. And it is a set time so that we can ensure the curriculum is being taught so that the kids are learning the skills. And on top of that, to make up for that time, we shaved five minutes off of each subject area, but we brought it back. So when you come in our building, uh, if you want to, um, go to the restroom, you have to have a book because you're reading while you're waiting for your turn in the restroom. So we've been very creative to make sure that we are maximizing every single instructional minute.
Any other questions?
Uh, I just have one. How was the schools selected for a pilot program?
So, um, the schools have been participating in a more comprehensive, the CI3T model. Most of the schools did a whole year of some professional learning and expert support. Many of the schools that went through that program last year and the year before are the ones that selected this. So again, you're looking at your tiered supports that you're offering students, and where are the holes, what are the pieces that were missing in order to meet all students' needs?
If I can just add to that. Sure. We reviewed, uh, over thirteen different curriculums for this concept before, before selecting, uh, Second Steps. It was reviewed by a statutory's office and Jennifer Lane and school counselors and principals and teacher leaders from all of the buildings who were considering it. So a great deal of thought and teaming was put into selecting curriculum that would be useful and not, and, and, and be easy for teachers to implement, because it's literally an in-the-box, ready-to-go kit. The planning stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, outcome measures will be used to see if it's working so we can, um, be able to roll it out to the rest of the schools.
So, um, reduced discipline, office referrals, increased attendance, those are some two areas that we'll be measuring. We also do, um, a screening, an SRSS, it's a social screening tool, and we'll use that also to measure implementation effectiveness.
Okay, I... As well as some surveys to, you know, just look at the work itself. I, I want to make sure that I understand. Something you said about taking five minutes away from the core areas, like from math, from reading?
It, no, it's more like, um, the extra bathroom break or the piece here. We've kind of pieced it all together. So we're still hitting the expected minutes that the district wants us to teach for every subject left, letter. We've just, I, the best way to put it, I guess, is that we've cut out any extra movement fluff that might have been in there. Maybe a, a break here or an extra recess there or a piece like that, so that we can ensure that every single minute is maximized. So they're getting, they're requiring expected minutes, uh, that the district expects us to teach for math, reading, science, social studies, and writing, and then, um, and, and then still having enough time, it means we, we teach them both. And it is a, a very tight schedule, but, uh, we piloted it last year and it worked, and we're going to continue growing and growing, and we just can't wait to see the results at the end of this year.
So guys, just, just add a little bit. Um, I think, um, Dr. Hazel gave me, um, some really good resources out of that last, within the last year. Uh, but there are lessons that teachers, um, use in their classes. They're gonna do it anyway. Like, they're gonna have these conversations for anybody who's been a classroom teacher, and I have. So if you've been a classroom teacher, you're teaching those kinds of behaviors. Sometimes you do it in the midst, in the midst of your lesson. And what often happens, and I know you, what often happens is that when something arises, we'll stop and take, take an opportunity and have something like community time, and we address an issue. And, and the one great thing about having a prescribed way of thinking about this is that you give students tools before they need them, as opposed to giving them the tools when they need them, right? And that's different, because oftentimes what happens is they don't have the tool before an issue happens, then what often happens is it turns into aggression and conflict, and there's a consequence that comes as a result of that. So for example, if somebody puts you down and you don't know how to handle put-downs, then what you do is you, you respond, you fight a fight, and most of the time it's fighting. And then you have a discipline referral, and then you have a student suspended or some consequences being issued, as opposed to teaching the lesson beforehand with the tools. They have, you know, videos, resources, so that teachers, because what happens, what's important is that adults need to be, um, teachers in particular, better prepared. Uh, I wish I had had something out there for the teacher. Better prepared, uh, at dealing with or handling or teaching students how to manage their emotions and their, and their social environment. And if you don't come from a place where you got that kind of training, when you get into a place like the world, and schools are part of that world, and you don't have those tools, then what happens is you're always fighting, trying to survive, as opposed to being able to navigate it well. And that's what we want to do is to give our kids the tools they need before these problems arise so that they know how to handle those problems. And guess what? When you learn it, it's for life. Like, it's not just in the classroom at school. It's, uh, when you go to the mall, when you go to the skating rink, when you go, I'm baiting myself because people don't go to the skate rinks anymore. But, but, but when you go to college, when you get married, all those things. I mean, those are tools that you use for life. And, and that's the part of the culture piece that we've been talking about is, you know, you gotta create the conditions for success. And so these are part of tools that lay the foundation, uh, for creating a, the kind of culture so that teachers can teach. Because when I'm teaching content, if you're ready to mouth and talking junk, you know, kids, uh, and I don't give you, well, you need to listen, then you're never engaged academically, right?
Yeah, and you know what? I, I love the program. I'm just thinking, I, I don't want another kid that comes into the district, we're paying money for it, teachers are not, may not use, or may not use with fidelity. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned also about putting something else on teachers' plates, another thing on their plates. And I'm still concerned about the time constraints, if it is in fact a lesson. Because you can't make up time. You just can't pull it out of the air and just say, extra time for, because the kids still have to go to the bathroom, still have to do recess, you still have to do all those things. So I just want to make sure that we are being good stewards of, and I'm sure you all have thought this through, and I'm gonna have to trust you with it, but I'm just saying, if you're gonna use this, I need to know that it's being used with fidelity and that teachers are buying into it, and that we're just not throwing another kid. We have a lot of kids on the shelf, guys.
Let me connect it though, uh, because this is critical. So, so I have to agree, um, you know, broad areas that the board focuses on when it comes to my work as the superintendent. And so the one point two is, uh, you know, communicating the vision, mission, and goals of the district. And so the 1.2 is, you know, communicating the vision, mission, and goals of the district, and that's the whole decorum piece. Because the alternative is, you know, status quo, do what you've been doing. And we keep getting what we got, and so I know you get that. But here's the thing, we're going to hold people accountable to creating these conditions, you've got to give the resources to help them change the conditions. And so you've got to give teachers the tools to change the way in which they do their business. Because here's the thing, if you don't have what the world calls order in your class, you can't teach. Y'all know that. But you have to give, and it can't just be, Teacher A is, so this really is smart. So Teacher A can get Johnny to climb up the wall, Teacher B, Johnny's tearing the wall down, you know? And here's a tool that can give teachers what they need to help Johnny be successful in any class he goes in, right? And that's what's critical. The alternative is to do the same thing you've been doing, and that doesn't work. We tried it for years.
I can, we do feedback from teachers. I cut this slide out because we were trying to reduce it as much as possible. So here's what some teachers said in the survey that we gave at the end of the year. The calm down strategies are the most beneficial. I continue to use the team-building activities to build community in my classroom. So again, it's some tools that they're using. The step verbiage that Walnut Grove uses is great when talking students through a problem. So when a student comes with a problem, staff have some specific steps that they can help them through that problem, so it doesn't escalate. The lessons around empathy supported my students. And then one teacher just stated that the lessons were exactly what my students needed.
That's a good piece that you left out.
Five or six slides. And I'm going to jump in and say eighty-five percent of our staff overwhelmingly said we'd heard you back.
Use it.
So is there a problem with last year and all these types of schools? Or is it just?
These are the schools that will be using it this year. Walnut Grove was our first school that went through the CI3T process, and there's a 360 feedback loop with that. So constantly, they were getting feedback from staff about the work that their team was doing with Kathleen Lane from the University of Kansas. And through that, we realized that there was a universal piece that we needed to put in place to support students. So Walnut Grove started two years ago.
Three years, this is the first year.
Here's listed all the schools that will be implementing that. Other questions?
They will use it, Dr.
Great question.
They will use it. We've just been, you know, we try to be prudent, but he can best believe.
Those were great questions. I appreciate the insight. All right, no other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hugh Walker again. Neighborhood Houses Twenty-First Century Grant Renewal, this will be for board information only.
I'd like to introduce Sterling Self, who is the president and CEO of Neighborhood Houses. They wrote and were granted the Twenty-First Century Grant in the 2017 school year, where they had a love to create ours, to be there, and to score. Would you like to come forward?
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Good evening, Dr. Davis, and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here on the first day of school. I trust that my staff was enrolling parents as early as today in the three schools where we represent after-school services, which is Airport, Bermuda, as well as Johnson-Waubash. Neighborhood Houses believes that all children have the right and the opportunity to reach their magnificent potential. And we do this through educational empowering experiences to help to bridge the opportunity gap. So what we are partnering with the district is in three schools, elementary schools, I believe you have the data to indicate that we are licensed for sixty children at Airport and Bermuda, and licensed for ninety children at Johnson-Waubash. We provide before and after care. Before care is to help issue out breakfast, so the children are ready with something in their body to learn for the day, and then during those critical hours after school between 3:30 and 6:30, we are there, we are not babysitters, we actually have a variety of curriculum that we use. We help with homework assistance, we have literacy opportunities, we too provide opportunities and work with children in self-regulation and behavior modification, we have STEM activities, including robotics, we have monthly family events, artistic expression in the schools, nutrition, physical fitness, and sports activities, as well as a partnership with the St. Louis County Library and the Botanical Gardens. And that's just a portion of the various activities we provide for children. A couple of the special events that happened in the 2016-2017 year was we also provided early release day programming for parents that are working, and if it's a teacher day, we have staff there to care for children. And one of the things I'm most proud of this year, we were able to take fifty of your children to see The Lion King on April 20th, and Dr. Warren and Dr. Walker were very supportive in making that happen. And again, it's the experiences that we want to expose our children to, to have them have the opportunity to see other things. My expression is if they can't see it, they can't be it. So we are excited to be here for our second year of the Twenty-First Century Partnership along with the district, and thank you for the opportunity to serve your children. Any questions?
Any questions for the board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're up again. Federal Programs and Projects Policy.
This is the second reading of the Managing Federal Programs policy, and I'll entertain any questions if you have them at this time.
I need a motion to accept the Federal Programs and Projects Policy.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Ms. Hogshead, seconded by Dr. Graves. So in the past, according to your statement here, that we're able to withdraw the funds before the program, right?
Before we actually expend it.
Yeah, before we spend it. So it's not, is it going to create a problem or a line item that we're having to wait until we spend it and then recruit it later?
We've had the opportunity to do it that way. We've not done it that way. We've always requested after we've expended.
Okay.
So this is just in line with what we've done?
Any other questions? All in favor of the Federal Programs and Projects Policy, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Modrzyk for Annual Secretary of the Board Report.
Good evening, board. At the close of each fiscal year, the district has, is required by DESI to submit an annual report to the State Board of Education. Basically, this annual report is due on August 15th, and the report breaks out all of the revenue, how we receive it, by local, state, federal, and other. It also breaks out all of our expenditures by fund, function, and object. It details all the debt that the district has, and then it includes all the information on transportation, including mileage and bus inventory. This report is very detailed, and it's very, there's three different sections of them, and they're broken out different ways, and they all have to balance. But basically, a summary of this information is that, there's a summary page on the front that shows our beginning balance at the end of the year, and this year we had $27.3 million. We brought in $145 million of total revenue, that includes our capital and bond money. We spent $137.9 million, which also includes our bond money. And then we had an ending fund balance of $34.8 million. And we also have the operating revenue, which is basically our special and general fund, that's where all of our revenue comes and goes, and all of our expenditures come and go. This year, last year, we had $124.4 million of revenue. This year, we had $127.2. And basically, that is broken out because we received about, our current taxes, our local taxes, came in a little bit better than they did in the prior year, actually $6 million better than it did in the prior year. We had $1.7 million less, though, in state revenue, and then we had about $273,000 more of federal. So the total operating revenue was actually three, like $2.8 million more than the prior year. For expenditures, last year we spent $124.4, this past year we spent $126.7. So, but, the good news is our fund balance did increase, which I was a little surprised at that, because I anticipated a little bit more expenditures out of the end of June. So we ended up spending about five hundred, or bringing in about $569,000 more of revenue than we did expenditures at the end of June, which bumped up our fund balance a little bit to 17.59%. So as you can see on this graph here, the 16-17, we bumped back up a little bit as where we were from the prior year. We will be submitting this to DESI on August the 15th. This is a, this is actually a preliminary. We will be audited, and there's usually several changes that we need to make with, maybe just between funds and functions and where things are. However, we do submit it by August 15th, and then the final audit, after the final audit is over, then it'll be fully correct. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I need a motion to accept the Annual Secretary of the Board Report.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Hogshead, seconded by Dr. Thurman. Questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Insurance premiums.
The district provides health, dental, and life insurance coverage for all of our full-time employees, and then some of our part-time employees are also eligible for the ACA-type part-time insurance. Now, we do, as a district, provide our own self-funding for the insurance, so that means that we are able to set our rates. Those rates are based on the claims experience that we have over the past year. And this year, I'm very, very happy to report that we had a very good year in claims. So what our plan administrator does is they look at our year and the experience and the claims experience that we had from this year and last year, and they project forward for the next fifteen months to kind of see how that's going to look. They were anticipating an eight percent increase of claims for the next fiscal year in medical, and about 11% increase for the prescriptions. And that is basically due for, because of the, all of the new prescriptions that are coming out that you see on TV, that's really driving the cost of prescriptions up, because people want to take those instead of the generics. And so that is going to drive the cost of ours up. However, we, because of our good experience, we, and the good experience happened because we had some employees that had some very serious illnesses in the prior years, and so those employees have either retired, or unfortunately are no longer with us, but they have dropped off. And so we had a really good claims experience last year. So we were able to, they were saying that our claims for our premium for next year could actually be reduced by 2.3%. However, in committee, we talked about, we met as a committee, and we talked about how we would like to keep the rate stable, because if we have a really bad year next year, and we have to increase the rates by 10 or 12%, that's not ever good. So we kept the rate stable. So we are suggesting that we do not increase the rate for this year and just continue the rate as it was in the past. Now, last year, we had a really good claims experience, and we were able to add the real appeal program to our, for our employees. We had some really good successes with that. I talked with some employees over at the fair, actually, who lost thirty and forty pounds on this program, and we really did a good job. So this year, as we talked with our insurance company, and they've got some visiting nurses that we decided that we could take some of this excess money and have visiting nurses go to each one of our schools and provide testing for this, like, you know, the different kinds of tests for diabetes, or for, you know, high cholesterol, or the different tests that they have. And so we're working with our insurance company to see the different tests that we can provide to our employees, so that they can, you know, be healthier and know to go to their doctor with these test results. So we're going to take that excess money that we did bring in and provide that additional benefit to our employees. So we are able to move, we're very excited about this, that we do have some money to use with our wellness, so that we can have really healthy employees, and it's really just using the savings that we had this year from the good experience that we had. And we would like to continue that, because we do have a healthy fund balance right now in insurance, so we would like to continue the wellness for our employees, because we really believe that it's important for employees to be healthy. So we are recommending that we do not have a price, we're not changing the structure of the insurance, and we're not increasing the price. We're going to keep everything the same for this next school year, which we're very excited about. And these are just the costs, you guys have the cost for the premium plan, the district pays $783, I'm sorry, $783 for our employees. For just the regular choice plan, the district pays $694 for our employees. And then those that are on our value and choice plan, which is our part-time plan, the district pays, the employees pay 9%, and then we pay the rest, and it's about a $4,000 premium for those, for the year, for those employees. And then dental, dental just always stays the same, and so it will still be $33 for the district to pay for our employees. And I just want to, the district pays for the employee portion, and then the employees are responsible for picking up for the family, if they have children, like I have, just my children on it, some others have their children and spouses on it. And that's all I have for that. If anybody has any questions?
Need a motion for the insurance premiums?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Hogshead, seconded by Dr. Thurman. Questions?
No, I'd just like to comment that I think it's great that you're doing a wellness program, and it's nice that the money from that goes back into the program, and hopefully, it will show that it helps, that we have less premium problems, and then we can put more into good health.
Right, exactly.
And catch it early.
Right.
It's great.
Any other questions? All in favor of the staying status quo on the insurance premiums? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed.
Thank you.
Tuition rates.
Every year, the district is required to set a tuition rate for, they used to be the undercarded districts, such as Riverview Gardens and Normity Collaborative, as described in the Missouri statutes. This year, we actually do still have tuition that we need to set a tuition rate. We have some, about three Riverview Gardens students that are still attending. We will be charging them a tuition, as stated in our MOU with Riverview Gardens, of $7,000. We have about thirteen Normity students still left with us, and we will be setting that tuition rate at $10,582. We are requesting that the board approve the tuition rate for the new fiscal year.
I need a motion to accept the tuition rate.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Hogshead, seconded by Dr. Graves. Any discussion?
Explain again why there's a difference.
When Riverview became accredited, they don't, we entered a MOU with them last year, that, and we've said that we would only pay the portion of, they would only need to pay the portion of state aid that they receive. The $10,000 that Normity has to pay for us is the state portion plus the local portion. So it costs, it actually costs, when I run the calculations, this $10,000, you know, $582. But we have an MOU with Riverview that because they are accredited, and we're allowing the students to stay here just so that they can finish their career, and it's three students.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the tuition rate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. LaRue, to introduce the new district compliance officers, and this will be for board action as well.
Ferguson Floreson School District Compliance Officers recommended for the 2017-2018 school year include Tiffany Best for Chief Academic Officer as the LEA compliance, ESOL, ELL compliance, migrant compliance, Safe and Drug-Free Communities Act compliance. And Dr. Philip Boyd, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, is the, for the Compliance for Americans with Disabilities Act, Title IX compliance, and OCR compliance, as well as Title VI compliance. Amy Cacciatore, Director of Student Services, for homeless compliance with Yolanda Rogers-Garvin as district liaison. Foster Care compliance, again with Yolanda Rogers-Garvin as district liaison. Suicide Referrals compliance with Jennifer Lane as district liaison. Disability, Section 504 NR Title II, with Rebecca Kazuzic, district liaison. Daniel Bierman, Director of Safety and Security, district, district safety compliance. And Terry O'Neil, Director of Facilities, district asbestos compliance. We ask the board to approve these individuals for our compliance officers for this year as we are required to show. as we are required to show.
Terry's title changed, so we just want to make sure it's for the record.
Correct, good point. Thank you very much for that catch. So Terry O'Neill, Executive Director of Facilities, the district asbestos compliance.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept the 2017-2018 district compliance officers.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Hogshead, seconded by Dr. Graves. Any discussions, questions? Hear none, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none, motion passed.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sad to announce that that's our last agenda. All right, no other business? Need adjourned.